Dickinson's where we go.
I text him and he's like, "call him," but straight to voicemail.
I begged him, I said every time, every time he'd go on to Dickinson to get something, I always sent. Says, "I can pull the flatbed."
So we were, we, do we need to wait for that until next meeting?
No.
Okay.
We might have to switch some stuff around, but I know he wanted to do policing, so. Uh, cause he's definitely has in, right?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, we'll get our meeting going here. It's gonna be a little goofy to start, cause we have to do. Swearing Lauren, then we gotta do our reorganizational meeting. And then back to our regular meeting, so we'll call this to order. Seven oh two, uh, Monday, November second, two thousand twenty. First of all, we need a motion to approve Lauren Schroeder. Um, back on the city council.
I'll make that motion.
Larry, uh, second.
I'll second.
Jeff, I second. All those in favor? Motion carries. We got a swearing in then, is that correct? So if you just, you've been through this probably twenty seven years ago, I assume. I, Lauren Schroeder of Gackel, North Dakota. I will. Just repeat, or. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Dakota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of councilman according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I will. Signed, David. So Lauren, welcome back on. Thank you for taking over position, you know.
Thank you, Lauren.
I'm gonna grab that because I don't want to get lost.
That's all we needed there. So we'll take a motion. Do we need to stop this meeting then, you said, correct?
Yep.
Take a motion to stop this meeting momentarily.
Make that motion.
Jeff, hi.
What's I mean?
Second Larry, and then, uh, I guess a motion to start the reorganizational meeting again. Sorry, guys, this is.
It's okay. I'll make a motion to start the organizational meeting.
Second.
I'll second.
Lauren, okay, so we'll get going. It should be short. Um, it's up to you guys, I guess, how you wanna do it. Right now, we have. I was on water sewer and policing. Jeff, hi, health, streets, lighting, library. Larry Larson, garbage, airport, ambulance, and parks. And Taylor was just on fire department right now, but I figured. Probably put Lauren on fire department. Would it all make sense, correct?
Okay.
And Bubba on policing means he's involved with that. Do you guys wanna keep your duties?
Yeah, that's why. So he needs policing and water sewer and policing under you?
Yeah, I guess.
He has to take over yours and stuff. Or what were you saying?
Fire department, though. Well, you're doing so much with the parks too, I guess. Would you wanna take something off of Larry, being he's garbage, airport, and ambulance and do?
Well, Jeff's got parks.
No, he's got.
Well, I'll take the fire van, parks.
Yeah, it says, or am I wrong? Mine says Larry's.
Larry's has got garbage, airport, health.
Ambulance and health.
Oh, mine's, yeah, mine's, okay.
I think originally they were. The way that you were saying it.
Okay.
And for some reason.
Last time we did them over, okay.
And then once they've been, uh, you know, this is the way they are now.
Okay, is there, I mean, it's up to you guys. You don't have to make a big. So Lauren would be.
So Lauren's gonna have fire and.
Is there something you guys?
You gonna do anything else? You want parks?
Maybe it don't make any difference. I can take the parks either way.
Is that?
Yep, that'd be okay, kind of the.
So Lauren on fire and parks?
Yeah.
Bubba would be water, sewer, and policing. Make sure I do this right here. Streets, lighting, library, Jeffrey high, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, and then Larry would still stay at garbage, airport, ambulance, and health.
Yeah.
Okay, who's got library?
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Streets, lighting.
Library, Jeffrey.
And library, okay. And who has health?
Larry Larson's staying the same on all this. Uh, garbage, airport, ambulance, and health.
So Taylor's taken.
Yeah, yep. Taylor pretty much moves up to where mine is. Okay, and Lauren, just add parks to this.
Right.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Lauren, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take a motion then. To approve that as read.
So move.
Lauren, a second?
I'll second.
Jeffrey, hi, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose. Motion carries. That's all we need for that then?
Yep, then you gotta take a motion to.
Then we'll adjourn that with the motion, guys.
We need to have a vice president and.
We done.
We did that last time.
Do we? We had him as president. And Bubba was vice president. Well, we had to do that to do. To get to this point where we're at for me as mayor and getting you back on, so. Do you wanna just stick with that? Is that all right with you?
Fine with me.
Okay. So we don't need a motion. We'll just keep that the same?
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? We're good. Okay, so a motion to adjourn the reorganizational meeting.
Move to adjourn.
At seven oh eight P M. Uh, second.
I'll second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, and then. Can we just go into our meeting?
Yep, now call it at eight ten or whatever.
Okay, so back to our seven oh nine. We'll save to our regular Monday, November second council meeting. Everyone has a chance to look at the minutes from our previous meeting. And everyone got those. We wanted them to be emailed to us. So that we had a chance, okay. Uh, any additions or corrections to that? If not, we'll take a motion to approve. The minutes from. Last meeting. Move to approve. Lauren?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor? Move on to the agenda. Does anyone look at that? Any additions or corrections on that? David, were you on? Was I supposed to put you on the agenda and I forgot, or got wires crossed?
We can put one out.
It's. Don't know. I didn't know if I was gonna be here, if I wasn't gonna be here and then.
Okay, I just assumed you're here to talk about the, the chicken stuff that we're going through right now, is that correct? And we'll, we'll put you on this time, but just make sure you.
It, it's interesting for me to be able to be here, so.
Sure.
Few thing I've watched you guys online.
Well, we appreciate you coming down to talk with us and, um, just make sure the next time you get on before, what is the deadline?
Before Wednesday.
Before Wednesday.
Just give me a call and you get on.
Uh, but we'll go ahead and get you on, cause I know your, uh. Court deal's coming up, I believe this month, so we can get things going in the right direction, so. So we'll just add David Black on to, um, visitors. And no other corrections or additions, so. Motion to approve. The agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Jeffrey, hi.
Second.
Lauren, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll just go right into. To David then, what you got for us tonight?
I've watched you guys, like I said, a bunch of times on YouTube. You seem to be really upset that I have chickens. I'm trying to figure out why. I have no immediate neighbors. My closest neighbor is. Way more annoying than my chickens.
We have a lot of those, but it is in city ordinance.
It is, but it's one that I feel should be either reformed or. Don't know. I'd rather see it reformed. I'd, I'd rather see poultry allowed. I understand the roosters feeling the reason why anybody really even knew I had chickens. And, uh. See. I don't know if it's close enough other than Sherry.
Yeah, well, we did.
Can you still hear that rooster?
Um, I actually thought you must've got rid of it, cause I haven't heard it for, for a little bit.
We've collared it.
Okay, cause I.
We put a collar on it. Keeps it from being able to crow.
Okay.
And, uh, I wanted to know. The only other one that's anywhere near me would be either Bubba or Gale. And I figured I'd see Bubba here tonight, but. He's, uh, busy.
Yeah.
At this time in the season.
Yeah.
And Gale, I see once every two or three weeks and he doesn't have any, he doesn't even. Know I still have him. And I talk to him outside. But, uh. Other than, other than the rooster, I don't see how it has any effect on anybody outside of my property. I didn't move Gackel to be. Held to some major metropolitan rules, none of us did. We, we like living out here. We like our freedoms. We like our liberties. You know, we like our privacy and our property. And as long as it's not hurting anybody else, I don't see how it's not a health concern. I've checked all the health codes on. Within their parameters. There isn't a house within a hundred fifty feet of mine that they can be affecting.
Sure.
Um. There's other animals, I guess, in town that fall under the same ordinance. And, uh. I've lived here a year. I haven't seen them. I don't see how they're affecting anybody. Now. Given due respect, animals have to be properly secured. You know? And it's funny for me to say it, cause you guys have had, what, four animal at large tickets, and three of them have been mean. I'll, I'll, I'll admit to that, you know? I mean, I've got a German shepherd that. Likes to be friendly and. And adventurous. He's not mean or anything, but he's, he's big. And I've had to pay a few tickets, and I don't have a problem with that. You know, it, it, uh. It should be that way. And I understand you can't just let people have anything they want. You know, otherwise people be. I know an ice cream girl that would have Scottish cattle and all kinds of things if she was allowed to.
Sure.
But. Within parameters, I don't see, and, and with proper. Pan or, or securing of the animals, I don't see how. It would hurt.
How did the chicken ordinance come in the past? Do you remember? Is this pre you? I mean, before you? I'm kinda curious why that.
I don't even tell you how it exactly, how it reads exactly.
Right.
We can sure get that. Um, I just wanna start by saying the reason that this even came to the council. Cause everyone on this council is aware of your chickens was when the rooster was out crowing all over. That came to us, so then we have to do something about it, and it was multiple people.
You, you ran into somebody's yard.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, that's, it's not that we went around looking for.
But I mean, that, that's the only time that they, that, that's the only time they've ever been up, was that time.
Sure.
The rest of the time was crowing. But, I mean, you can hear a rooster crow when, when they're allowed to. You can hear him for five miles, so.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that that's how it got brought up. We weren't over there.
I, I understand.
I never complained about them in my yard. It was other people complaining about them crowing.
It's not, it's not that we're so upset about it, but there's an ordinance against it.
I understand.
And that's why we're at where we're at. And you can go, I don't know exactly as far as getting petition going and what percentage to sign that, and then we can look at that as a council. How many people are for it and against it.
My problem is that most of the percentage of this town doesn't live in this town.
Well, I mean, we can.
When it comes to that, it's only the residents.
Only the permanent residents.
So in other words, if we have hunters that live in Fargo, that's their residency. They have no say so. When it comes to a vote in town.
Okay.
Or the city limits.
Anyways, the reform I'd like to see, I, I'd like to see that a lot. Uh, rabbits, of course, we can't have rabbits running all over the place and prolific.
Sure.
Reproducers, but, uh. Pot-bellied pigs. I've known lots of people with pot-bellied pigs. They're smarter than most dogs that I've known.
We just, as long as we don't get complaints, we don't, we don't bring it up. We don't drive around looking for this stuff, I mean, honestly. I don't know what you heard, but that's how it.
I think, I think your animal at large ticket should be more for animals over a certain weight.
They get, they go up higher each time you get one, so the next one you get will probably be up in a couple hundred bucks.
I mean, my dogs are nice.
Yeah.
But not everybody's dogs are nice.
But the problem there is we've had it in the past. We don't wanna see someone get bit again, and then we're forced to put it down, and then there's a whole issue that's, it's a family pet, and we don't wanna go there again. So that's, the leash law will not get.
I'd rather be bit by. Five pound shih tzu.
So the only thing I can tell you right now is get your petition going and get people on your side, and then we'll look at it from there. I don't, what is your guys' thoughts?
No, that's exactly what I was.
We're just not gonna go and overturn it, and most of the city's against it.
As a majority doesn't care.
A majority of, I don't know anybody, I'm not. I know more people that live outside of this town than I do the people that live inside of this town, because I just don't.
Well.
I don't go over, you know?
I guess that's my field. We'll have to look at the ordinance as it's written. And if you can have a significant or sufficient petition. Then we'll go through the process of changing the ordinance.
Okay.
And, or the needs change. I don't know. I honestly don't know.
I have till the eleventh with the judge. Which I wish I would've had more time, but I, the last time I got to speak with Andrew, it took a, it could, took a court order to get me here.
Sure.
Because I couldn't leave my employment. I don't work in town. I don't work anywhere locally. I build interstates and U S highways.
We, we understand that. We just. I mean, I hate to tell you, we got nine days to get it going.
I know, but.
Maybe we can get you some more time. I don't know.
Well, that would be fine, and, and I think, you know, that was brought up to where if we could start working with each other here.
Yep, absolutely. I, I stand behind what I told you that might have.
Yeah.
Matt here for a while.
And I don't think the judge will have any, any problems with that. He was more than happy to grant me a continuance to give me time to be able to speak and address you guys.
Yep, no, we sure appreciate you coming, but yeah, get going on that, so we can.
Okay.
Meet and get, I mean, see what the city, that's all I can say, see what this resident city or the city is my.
How, how does that collar work? It's not like an electric collar.
No, no, it's, it's, uh.
We got bark collars.
They, they do, but it doesn't work on a chicken. The chicken's vocal pattern comes from down on its chest, down by its heart. But to be able to crow, they have to be able to extend that up. So it's, it's a, it's a Velcro collar about an inch and a half wide. And it just goes around the base of their neck to where you can get. I've got big fingers, so I use my little finger. If I can get my little finger in there, he, he'll be able to eat and drink and be okay, but he can't get. It up to where he can crow.
Okay, well, we appreciate you stopping in and good luck with that, so. Anything else on you guys? Go from there?
Yeah.
Alright, thanks again. You're more than welcome to stick around if you wanna.
I would like to.
Sure, okay.
If you guys have some other issues, I'd like to hear.
Sure, no problem. Okay, thanks again. Uh, we'll go into city maintenance then right away. Or for Otter, or no, Bill, I'm sorry.
Well, we had a water break. Over at Ryzer's. Which. Luckily, I was able to get their curb stop off. Which stopped the water leak. And then. Unfortunately for them, it was under their garage, so we had to reroute the line around the garage. And hook it up to the main again, into the house.
Is that something the city's partially liable for?
No, that's all that, that's all they know better. And they're gonna, they're just gonna send them the bill instead of sending it here and then us sending it out and.
They used to do that.
They did catch it pretty good, because, um, when I read the meter three days, four days prior to the, to the break. I didn't see anything wrong with their meter going up, so and that, it had to be within that week that it started doing that.
That's that block that's so screwed up anyway, isn't it, with all the garages and stuff it handles?
And they figured it was slowly for quite some time. Because they had pressure issues.
Oh, sure.
And he says, I talked to Jeff. Just the other day. And since they repaired that, they have good pressure.
Interesting.
It'll be about two thousand, he got the bill eighteen hundred and something dollars.
That's not as bad as others.
You had a mess up there.
Yeah.
And they're taking responsibility for it, so now.
That's too bad for them. At least you got it fixed.
We talked to Vaughn about them storm sewers in town. Uh, he said he'll come back some other day and get it to me and I'll show him, and he'll measure them up and. See what we all need there. Okay, for the storm sewers. And that's one over by Brett's, the one down here and one up by the church, right?
And who did you talk to?
Vaughn Miller, or Vaughn, you old. Carriage truck is out at double J. I think he looked at it, right?
There's, there's twenty-one things that's gotta be taken care of.
Said they were all.
Isn't this, you're saying a lot of them are just minor things?
We went through this last year with a bunch of stuff, didn't we? Was that two years ago you had it out there?
For the garbage truck? I must wonder for maybe.
Was it?
We had it down, we had it down in, uh, Wisick a couple of years ago, and it had a whole bunch of work done, if that's what it was.
Um, I think that's not all of that.
But he did say, you know, he was kinda waiting on. Find out if, you know, the city wants him to go ahead and fix everything that needs to get fixed.
He'll have an estimate of some sort?
Yeah.
Oh, the brakes.
I don't know. He never did call me today.
Yeah, he didn't really. He just told me there were like twenty-one things that, but he said a lot of it's just a little minor, minor thing. Windshield wiper brakes, you know, that's something, it's, it's still something that's gotta, you know, it's gotta pass.
You got any D O T out there? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, well, yeah, he, he, you know, he'll.
Cory does a great job. He's.
And, uh, yeah, he can pass it or fail it.
Yeah, and he looks for that little shit too, to make sure you're not, no, I think he does a good job. Alright, anything else, Bill? You'll let us know on that then, why? I guess it's gonna be sometime before.
Crazy.
If you call them, I'll let you know.
We don't have to have a meeting for that. Just call us and we, or call them. There are houses on it, so.
Yeah, that works good.
Yeah, sure. Alright, thanks, Bill. Alright, Otter?
Okay, one would be the fire hall grant, and I talked with Lauren about it. The, there was a review that was not done on the grant. So they were, put a hold on to our grant. We did get the grant for the, the cameras at the fire hall. But we're wait, they're waiting on a review, so I called Daniel, and Daniel said the minute the review's done, he'll kick that out and. He'll call the people to, to get out here, because you gotta have that, those cameras installed by December thirty first. So it's kinda like we need to get this done now. Did you look going in?
You can do the review?
Did you look on the review and see what it was?
Yeah, cybersecurity. And I called the lady in Bismarck today. I finally got it. I tried on them. So Thursday and Friday. And they're working from home too. But I got ahold of her today. One of the reasons it's so mixed up is cause we're, the Gackel Fire Department, so to speak, is listed five different ways. That's what the mess is all about. Basically, what I did today, I took the city out of the picture. So it'll be Gackel Fire Protection District. She took all the other names off the list. And Gackel's not the only one. They're dealing with quite a few departments. And what happened? A lot of this goes back. Prior to the Gackel Fire. Uh, Protection District. We were, the Gackel Fire Department was under the city rule. And then. The rural was contractual. And I think that was in ninety-eight. We went on the tax roll. And that's when it became. Gackel Fire Protection District. So city and rural are all treated as one. And it has nothing to do with the city council anymore. Let's put it that way. And that. A lot of that was our own fault, the way we've been submitting paperwork over the years. We've been using different names and, so it's getting straightened out.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna handle all that. I don't have to.
I was gonna talk to the district secretary treasurer. And have him do the cybersecurity. Application for him. Once that's in, then everything's set to go.
And I gave you Daniel's number on there. As soon as that's done, he said, call him immediately and he'll get, he'll kick the grant back to us. Cause it's got to be installed by the thirty-first. December, we lose it. Okay. I think that's it for me. Other than you have already got the thing with the church over there.
Yeah, we can go through that from new business.
Okay.
Alright, anything else then? Alright, Bubba's not here. Let's get past, uh, Jeffrey high.
Uh, lights. From any, I haven't heard anything. I haven't seen anything.
There's one, uh. Right in front of the bar.
Mm-hmm, it's going off and on.
Yeah, that's an off and on.
Okay, right on the.
Right on.
Yeah, one right on, on the sidewalk in front of the bar.
Right.
I always think electricity's coming out.
Okay. Couple complaints just on the roads, um. That main road going to the school, what's that, Elm?
Elm.
Yeah. Just those big, big bottles, um, right there, just so you can get this to something else. Rock, dirt, we got some crushed asphalt somewhere.
Yeah, we got some crushed asphalt.
Not, not the big one down there. I told him that that's been there for years. That was on a Dane's place, but there's like some significant wall cracks that are, you know, foot deep. If we could just get something in those. And then, uh. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, Larry?
I don't have anything.
I assume you don't, but maybe you've got some complaints you want to talk about.
We didn't get any complaints on the, you know, we dumped dirt on the street.
No, absolutely not.
Probably complain about that.
Absolutely not, no, no.
I have to clean the gutter, yeah, I worked on it today, but I didn't.
Not at all.
That's. Yeah, that's the only thing I had.
Okay, no, there was a guy walking. She says that somebody swerved at her. But I think they were swerving the pothole. You know, when she was walking and. That, that's one gallon that said something, so. But it was because of those potholes right there, so. That's it.
Okay. Alright, we'll go, old business, uh, we approved the new budget. Uh, permit for Brooks Zinker. Letter from Bookhold's.
No more complaints there at all.
Uh, what was that for again?
Brooks was for the Ducks Unlimited. The, the Duck Fest, Duck Fest.
Oh, that's what that was. It wasn't.
That was a Duck Fest one.
Oh, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Letter from Buckle's.
That was for the dog, and that dog has, she's gotta contain now. She went out.
Oh, that's right.
She went out bought chains and stuff. She didn't, she said she didn't realize that the dog was running loose. And I said, well, there's been quite a few people all summer telling your kids, you've got to keep them dogs either leashed, cause they let them run. So she has paid her fine and she has bought chains to let her dogs out.
So that's gotten better, no more complaints on us?
Yeah.
Thank you guys for handling that. Um, Tom Moore, engineer, call.
He called to give you some, um. New things, and you told him when he had something better that the residents could afford, then you would discuss.
Yeah, we can go through that in a second here. New business, raffle permit for the Legion.
That would be for their, um, um, what are they getting ready to do right now? Is that their? They have a feed and they do, they have the baskets.
They're doing it for the veterans.
The veterans, the veterans thing. They do it every year. They do it every year.
So we just need a motion to approve that then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that a motion.
Jeff High, the second?
Second.
Second from Lauren, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, permit for John Miller?
He got um, his garage slab, all repoured concrete, put heat in it and all that.
Okay.
I want this permit.
Huh?
Hopefully you guys approve that, cause it's done.
Move to approve, okay.
Second?
Second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, discuss the Old Catholic Church, Tom Jacoby.
Well, I was trying to say Tom Jacoby, the house, the church, but it's the Old Catholic.
The Old Catholic Church, what was, why, why is Tom Jacoby on there?
Because he was the one that had the, the water bill in his name. It was in his name.
We have some paperwork here, I, if you wanna explain this better than I can.
Lauren probably could a little better than I could, they, 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 it went up for taxes, alright. We had to put in by November.
To the county, correct?
To the county, so the county now owns it. But see, we had to put our paperwork in by November first to put the money that he owes on taxes. And last year was missed because I had came in brand new and she was teaching me all the other stuff. So that was one that got, you know what I mean, put to the wayside. So now we have two years of water bill there, now.
Totaling twenty-nine hundred dollars.
I was, I was with her, I mean, I was talking with the auditor over there, she helped me through it all. But I never told her what property it was, so we worked on this thing for about a good week and a half. And as I'm getting, I turned my paper in, they took over that about four days prior. So now, he'll tell you how the next step goes, but they're having a thing on November tenth, it's just one of us, somebody's gotta go to court.
Well, I'll start off, you know, I worked on that last year when I was going around on all these old abandoned buildings. The owner, the legal owner, Doug Roth. I called him numerous times, left messages, he answers by his name, but he never returned a call. Um, what happens, that sale is on the seventeenth. Anyway, I put it on the calendar, I'll go over, represent the city.
So then he'll make those papers, Joe.
Basically, and then after, if nobody's there bidding on it, it'll revert to the county. The county generally reverts it back to the city. So that twenty-five hundred or whatever it is. The city would have to issue a check for that, but most of that is specials, you know, whether it's water, mowing. So we'd actually get the twenty-seven hundred dollars or close to it right back again. The only portion I believe they retain is a state tax, there's that small portion of state tax and county tax, which is very minimal.
If you read on it, they're, they're, they're trying to get sixteen hundred for it. But that sixteen hundred is, is, we would get back anyway because those were taxes from the year before that we had put on assessment. Cause we had already had taxes on their assessment for that building.
So basically, we just bought a piece of property for twenty-nine hundred dollars? Is that what you're telling me? Cause we're not gonna get it back, obviously.
We're not gonna do it, no.
What really happened?
Sixteen hundred?
If, somebody goes over and represents the city, and that's what happened at that greenhouse. If nobody else bids on it, if there's nobody there bidding on it, I just stand there like a dumbass. I don't do a thing. If there's an outside bidder, then I would go under your advice, do I bid them up? Because the opening bid will be that amount.
It'll be sixteen hundred.
So if somebody else is standing there bidding, they can't bid less.
And that would actually come back to us if somebody bought it because it's from three years ago taxes we put on for assessment for. So we're into a twenty-nine and sixteen.
But the twenty-nine is irrelevant then, basically?
Yeah.
The twenty-nine hundred is.
We're, we're, we're gonna be done with that, I, I just gotta take it out of the computer. She said bring that along to the meeting and maybe, cause if you read the top of it, they're, they're trying to see what it's worth. So that might help out, she said to bring, cause I have the sheet in there, I was, I, her and I were talking and I called her back and I said, did you, did the county just take property of this? I said, we've been working on this thing for my taxes, that's the place I'm doing it for, and she says, uh-uh.
I was the one that put the sign up, so.
Did you? Well, I had to drive past it and here I had my thing already go in the mail and the Logan County auditor helped me do it and, yeah.
Yeah, so the opening bid on that's gonna be twenty-nine, twenty-six, seventy feet. So in other words, if somebody comes there and bids that opening bid, and say I raise them to thirty-two hundred, the city would have to issue a check for thirty-two hundred, but then we get all the specials back, so that would probably be
Right.
Say, whatever it is. Specials is um, twenty-four eighty-seven. So ninety-two dollars and thirty-three cents would be retained. So basically, just, it's a flip-flop, is what it is.
But if we're looking at, we didn't get that money, actually, nobody's been there, so they haven't used any water, they haven't had any garbage, we have mowed it.
I just think at this point, if anyone's willing to bid twenty-nine hundred dollars in that shape that it's in, we don't want them in this town anyway.
That's right.
Am I wrong assuming that, or not?
My recommendation, we just run them up to unquit's bidding. Unless he gets crazy, he does get crazy.
Well, that, that ain't gonna happen, but I think that's a good idea.
Well, right now, right now it's just a cat litter box and all the residents over there all tell you the cats are.
Uh, doors are off the hinges.
And the cats, I just got a complaint the other day, what can't we do something with them cats, they're going in and out, they're one of the neighbors across, they're, keep going to the bathroom and they're flower beds all the time.
I, I agree, that's my opinion.
I mean, I'm willing to go over and be representative for the council.
Just run it up, see if we can get it.
And I, I, cause that day, I went over for that greenhouse, there was seven properties, and one was a lot and there was light. And that was down by Bernstein. And I think what was against it was a hundred and five dollars or some damn thing, and a lady bid a hundred and five and got it. But that's the neighbor to the lot.
Sure.
She bought it for the.
Well, I mean, if someone's willing to do that and tear it all down and go through the work, I guess, good for them, but I don't see it.
Not the big church.
It's a habit of ours, you know, you can't live better.
Well, the doors are all off and everything now. I think your daughter goes over and tries to shut them.
After me, the worst way to figure out a way to get out of there. And she would like to buy those lots. Cause she owns.
Right. What the hell was it?
Part of the back lot, doesn't she?
See, there's four lots, and Catholic Church sits on the west forty feet, I think it is. Yeah, west forty feet of lots twenty-seven through thirty. And Marilyn Insmenner, or Marilyn Alhardner, owns the east hundred feet of lots twenty-seven through thirty. So, I'd venture to say, if the city owned it, I bet Marilyn would be willing to pay the demolition, and then we give her the damn land.
I was just gonna say if we can work with her, that'd be our best bet then. So the city doesn't have to eat all the cost on this again.
I think after that one, all the churches, before they close, in their books, they have it for demolition, because they didn't want, their church to become a drug house like that one did. So I don't think we have that problem with any of the other churches.
Okay, so you'll just use your discretion then, I assume, right?
Yeah.
Thanks for doing that then.
I'll go over on the seven.
Whatever, these are just copies of what you already have, correct?
Yeah, I put, I put a copy of one up there and then another.
You can keep all that then, Lauren, to take with you.
Cause did you go to those sales? Andy, or um?
Uh, do I go to those sales?
You guys don't have to be there, do you?
Uh, Andrew does.
Oh, does he?
Yeah.
I couldn't remember the last time.
I think, he usually sits in the office, I know that. And if anybody ever calls in, I know we had a sale, that was just north of Laird, that bar up there. And he just sat in the office waiting for phone calls and stuff, to see if anybody would bid on it, but obviously nobody bid it, the other bank took it over. So, but yeah, he's usually the head on the, on that. I think we got a phone call today, actually, about that in the office today. I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
I know there's a guy interested. I'm afraid it's gonna be a deal.
We'll continue to look at. Alright, uh, so we're clear on that one. Fire Hall Grant, we went through that. Uh, the street project. I met with Tom, and I believe Kyle was the other guy. I'll hand these out first to you guys. This is the original one, the three point four that we've all seen a hundred times. And this is the latest one that he did. A couple of months ago, he came at us with one at, for like two point one or something million, and that was, I'll give you that too long, sorry, I only have three of these maps.
What's the third of the roads?
It was, yeah. Okay, so this, Lauren, I don't know if you've seen this one yet. This was the bare minimum one of all the worst streets in town, maybe you were still on.
I am, somebody gave me a copy of that.
Okay, and then this was, we've been approved for the four million dollar one, that one, we skipped a few roads, that's not changed. The elevator road also, it's three point four was the one that the city, pretty much seventy was at seventy-six percent of the city agreed upon. The reason I'm bringing this to you, cause we were hoping we could come up with different options, and talking with Tom, we can't. Because if we're not happy with this, we're gonna spend one million or one and a half million doing, getting all this equipment in here and doing one road or two roads. And we're leaving the other shit ones, you know. So I'm leaving it to you guys, we have to get going. Sometime in December's gonna be there, so by next meeting, if you guys wanna take these home, go through, talk to people, look at, I mean, it's up to you guys what we're gonna bring up, we can pretty much do anything. Up to the four million, which obviously.
This is the uh,
that's the bare minimum with all the reconstructed ones.
That's the two of one point nine.
He's got it down to one point nine million now, and that is with, sorry, I'm missing one of them. There it is. That's all with cement stabilized base instead of all gravel, which cheapens up the cost a little bit. Um, but that's gonna come down to when the bids are coming in. Gravel might be cheaper at the time, this cement stuff might be cheaper, it's kind of on a, but this is what he's came up with now. He knocked off, I think, around two hundred thousand from the last time to go that route. And that is on both bids now. The reason I'm bringing it up is because we have to either kick it in the nuts and get going by December, or throw it out the window, which we're getting complaints, we're ready to people swerving at people, so I don't think we're gonna leave it be, cause that school is terrible. That's probably the worst one in town, isn't it?
It's good, huh? Most probably, I guess.
I'm pretty sure you guys have these, but if you want to take these, I'll try and get Bella a copy.
Now, but when, when you're talking about those, I don't think the, the residents realize the ones that you turn back into dirt, into the dirt roads?
Larry, I've got.
I don't know if everybody realizes the ones that people wanted to go back to dirt roads, just these few roads we did, that went back to dirt roads, that it wasn't free, we just didn't go out and do it, it did, that costs money too.
Yeah, those two sections were what?
Thirty-four thousand dollars.
You know, my personal feeling right now is, you know, at one point nine, or I'll say two million.
Yep.
And we've got a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar a year payment. That's probably as good as a bu, uh, deal as we're gonna find. By doing the east-west streets and skipping the avenues, that means if somebody lives on the middle of an avenue, they're only gonna be driving a hundred and fifty feet and they get on a good streak. They better take the best of what options we have. I will, the only part I disagree with on this map, he, on the west side of the school and on the east side of the school, he's going three hundred feet north.
Right.
On those two avenues, I think they could be eliminated.
Or, or put in somewhere else.
Right.
Cause that is just not, those are both dead end roads, in a sense. That's not a lot of travel at all.
Yeah.
To give you guys night view.
They are in good shape for the most part.
For all, I mean, looking on this, this is all complete reconstruct, there's no overlay on any of these streets here. And he told me, we can look at roughly, and it's give or take depending on block lengths and everything. It's about a hundred thousand dollars for one block length, so that could be easily a hundred thousand to two hundred right there, you know, on that street right by the schools that you're talking.
Right, move out a bad corner right here, we could probably fix that corner better.
Okay.
Uh, up here is another stretch, this is really a bad corner.
Spruce Street, it doesn't have any work going on. I, I think if we move some money around.
See, and that's, it pretty much follows, because the main sure line runs all the way down Spruce Street. And that was ripped up pretty much, and that's a deep line, so they had to do a real wide trench to allow for their um, ah, what do they call it?
Not the lift station, man.
No, it's um, when they sloped it.
They, they had to allow for it not to keer in.
Yeah, right. What the hell they call it? Shorey.
Yeah, sure.
They had to shore out it, so that damn near, I don't know, that covered what, two-thirds or better of that street? Cause that's a deep line all the way.
Okay.
And it's, I wanted to present this to you guys because I talked to Tom, um, from Moore Engineering. I said we could do another informational meeting or a city get together, but at what point, the, we went through all the process that we need to, we've gone above and beyond, we've had two or three of those city meetings. The seventy-six percent's pretty soon gonna be like, I told you guys what the hell to do, what do you want?
That's where I, 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 my opinion is really getting frustrating, cause we gotta prove it. The city approved this at seventy-six percent, at thirty-four, or three point four million dollars, get to quote.
Right, and I, that's what I'm saying, they left it up to us, they approved us for the maximum of four million. It's up to, to us now to make a decision, it's, and we have.
But we were denied by the,
Bank of North Dakota.
By the Bank of North Dakota because.
Right now, he's got us.
On, on three point four, no, on four million, but we didn't do it.
He did some checking, I mean, this is all rough, it's not, like two point three nine percent interest from Doherty and Company owned for twenty years, you don't know what he's looking at.
And I think that goes back to, we can, we show payability at that.
Sure. And this is, I mean, this is rough, guys, don't hold me to this, but fifty-foot lot is roughly two hundred and fifty-three dollars a year, at this uh, two million dollar project, a hundred-foot lot is five hundred and six dollars, and a hundred and fifty-foot is seven hundred and sixty.
At two million?
At the two million, and this is rough, cause I mean, we can sure change this stuff and do as far as water hookups, or I mean, that's down the road, we just need to come up with something, so by next meeting, basically.
The two million is for all the east and west streets?
Yes. It's actually, yeah, it'd pretty much be all the blue ones that are east and west up there, so it'd make it easy, but if you wanted to see this.
Minus, minus my street, my center school.
Minus my town.
That's an avenue.
That's an avenue, but you, you just said that he wanted you three hundred feet, that's a hundred yards, that goes all the way to the end of my driveway.
Yep. That's what it's showing.
That's what it's showing for him to do, I don't need that done.
Yeah, so it'd be.
I can more than show you guys how to fix some of these things more conveniently than what you are.
Yeah. But it's something, we kicked around, talked to people, whatever you guys wanna do. Um, cause once we tell him to go, it's a two-month process and we have to start bidding somewhere around in February, so by next meeting, we better have stuff together and I don't care if you guys have three or four different ideas, come here next meeting and we get them, add them together and
Okay.
Rough it out, but.
I think it's time.
Any questions on that, or can I explain something?
By trying to go back to gravel, all, especially. By trying to go back to gravel, all, especially Al, that carries so damn much water, we're not gonna control erosion.
We're gonna go back to gravel anyways.
We were told if we go back to all gravel, it's two million maybe these guys, so.
Yeah.
We're right back in the government.
Two million dollars.
And that was two years ago, so it's probably.
Gravel, gravel keeps blowing up, I mean, you get washboards, you get potholes.
Yeah.
If you went back and if you did anything, I'd go with, I'd go with asphalt milling. And you can get them, I mean, they're, mostly these guys are, that aren't reusing or can't reuse all theirs on some of these large highway projects, cause they mill all that asphalt out.
Yeah. It's.
They've only got so many options of where they can get rid of it.
Well, I guess.
You can't just take asphalt and throw it out in a hole.
Right.
Cause it's a petroleum product.
Right. But I'll leave it to you guys to come up with something. Add or subtract or whatever you guys have thought, I mean, play around with it, see or talk to people. I know we're not gonna make everyone happy and that's the shits of it, but, I mean, if we do the worst roads here, for sure.
But it does, that, that covers what's really hurting.
Allen Street.
The problem is, I don't wanna also do this two million dollar project and five years, ten years from now, we have the same stuff going on on the north south.
And do another two million, or probably three million by then.
You know, I don't know what it would cost to just, uh, do a chip seal on, uh, avenues.
On ourselves?
Cause you know, like I said, most of them were ripped up and they're, cause that's where the sewer lines lie, they lie on the avenues, not on the streets. That's why our streets are such damn bad shit.
So chips.
Except for Spruce down there.
The chip seal on north-south, you've seen it?
Yeah.
And he's coming next meeting?
He would have been here this meeting, but I told him I really didn't pay for him to drive all this way.
Can you ask him about that chip seal and put it on this two million dollar project?
Yeah.
Because I feel good about this, I guess.
You guys got hot, hot patching in the cracks and potholes, I mean.
And then.
And before you chip seal.
That's, that's pretty much what most of South Dakota does, is almost all their streets.
Okay.
What's your opinion, Larry?
Well, gone this far, apparently they're not gonna fix themselves.
You don't know.
We've been waiting.
Mine might if it gets too bad.
For two years, Larry, they haven't fixed themselves.
They haven't gotten any better.
We're gonna start losing the pay order in some of these holes pretty soon.
I, I agree with Lauren, I think we should check and see what it would cost to chip seal the avenues. Um, and, uh.
You want to chip seal the avenues, but you still wanna go ahead with this two million dollar for the other ones, right?
Yeah, addition to this, addition above this one.
Right.
So that way the people in the avenues do have a pretty road, looks like it's new.
Well, we're, we're. Majority of your weight running down these streets besides Elm, because the school bus run down, runs down Elm. I'm not talking about the garbage truck.
Right.
Cause that doesn't run down on enough to.
It's pretty much gonna be now the care center, when their truck comes in, which I don't know if we can.
Their Henry's truck?
Yeah.
We can put a restriction on anything you wanna put restrictions on.
I mean, we can't have them.
I don't see any, I don't see any point other than, you know? Filling some of the cracks or one that goes by the elevator, cause they're gonna pound that to death anyway. Yeah, I agree. And we've decided to take that out. That, that approach over there, I don't see any point in you asphalting that, cause they're gonna pound that to death.
That's why we went gravel up to that point already.
Right, that's the way it's gonna be. I was, I was about to die myself there for a little bit.
It was pretty bad. I mean, the Henry's truck parts on the, uh, west side of the care center now, it, it's nothing going on with that street, is there?
No, it's pretty good.
So I don't think.
It's not that big of an issue.
I don't think it's a big issue.
And then what's our other truck right, right out, right here, Birch, is that the truck route?
Yeah, well, Randy goes on, maybe on the other one.
That one's a little rough.
It's not on here, it's being reconstructed.
No.
Well, that's just, that's right, that's not on.
But most of Birch has a sewer line right now.
It's got a sort, it's been reconstructed a little over ten years ago, so.
The other thing we could probably do, you know, we got about two hundred accounts, right?
Um, two hundred and thirty-four that pay, I mean, that I, that I send bills to.
Every time we've had an issue, trying to go specials is a nightmare, an absolute nightmare. If we got all this outlying land, how do you make it equitable? That's what people get so damn worked up about.
Well, let's try an infrastructure, figure out what it'd be.
If we go forty dollars a month on two hundred accounts, that's eight thousand dollars a month. Or let's say fifty, we'll make it easy numbers, two hundred accounts, that's ten thousand a month, twelve months, we got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So you divide that, so you take ten thousand, divide that by two thirty-five, it'll tell you an individual.
And we have a hundred, we'll put a hundred and thirty some dollars.
It'll tell you how many of your.
So infrastructure.
Totally yearly, one hundred and twenty-five, we'll just say, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Oh wait, a hundred and thirty-six, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Annual obligation.
So that fifty dollars a month.
And let's keep in mind, that's with that ten percent reserve.
Right.
Just, so a hundred and thirty-sixty.
So you think a fifty dollar infrastructure, just a monthly fee will cover that?
Then.
Close. I think it's a lot less scary than specials.
I do too.
And that's, that's your guys' problem right now.
We started with the special.
And we heard both sides of that.
And, and.
I prefer, I personally would probably prefer that, I mean, it's the same, it all comes out to be the same thing, but.
I mean, there's, there's some people who hear that.
Right.
The other thing is.
We have some that can't.
They pay pretty close attention to their bills, but they're probably on some kind of a.
On a lot of these lots.
Fixed it.
I'm thinking of right beside you, Larry, there's eight lots there that have water.
I pay you when I see the wall, I just pay you.
We can want those two thirty-five to three hundred.
Take a small portion for that infrastructure that we're providing for those properties.
I agree.
And it doesn't have to be fifty, it could be some other number, but they either are gonna, you know, that house we tore down where we borrowed the dirt for the church, his taxes were thirty, I believe like thirty-one dollars if I remember right, when I looked at the comments. That was there for how many years? Twenty years? Twenty-five? He bought that property, he didn't have to do nothing, but it cost him twenty bucks a year. If he's paying them, there's water insured to that property. If he's paying every month, he's either gonna.
I agree.
Develop it or get the hell.
I, I know, they did that in Cleveland, and I think what it was, if you, if she, she was telling me, the auditor over there, that if you own a piece of property in town and you get taxed on it and you have nothing, like these houses that are sitting here, nobody's doing anything, they charge you twenty-five dollars.
For vacancy.
Just a month, because you've got a piece of property that could be.
I think that'd be huge.
Generating money into your city. And that's how Cleveland survived, because they had so many people leave that town and they didn't pay nothing.
Right.
So now you have, they can, they, they survived it when they started doing that.
I like that.
And then we got to leverage, if they're not paying the twenty dollars or twenty-five, whatever it is, by November, we turn it to their taxes, so they either gotta pay it or lose it, they have one of two choices.
Okay, I like that.
And I think it's something we should work on.
If we wanna go this infrastructure rate, which I think, if we did that, we could get a lot of these houses or properties involved. Rather than owning them and not paying taxes, or even paying taxes at thirty dollars a year.
Yeah, it's just nothing.
And, and still be out in front of the house, next door neighbor has to pay seven hundred dollars a month or a year to own it, cause he lives there. That's not fair. I agree. Okay?
Alright, so we'll just, we'll start there and then you guys wanna mess around with that and see what you come up with. And we can always, we don't have to have the assessment part done until I believe next October or something like that, I think is what he told me.
So we just need some permission here.
Soon as we give them the go-ahead.
Yeah, well, I think we had a plan and let them put it out on bids, we can still reject the bids. But if the bids would come in, now we'd know what kind of money we gotta generate.
Right, yeah, and he, like I said, it's a two month process before he even goes to bids. We don't wanna be first or last, we wanna be more or less in the thirty first, first thirty or forty percent to start bids, that's what I missed, so. Um, we'll just, after next deci, uh, next meeting, we'll see what we come up with and then I can call him the next day and get it rolling, so. And if you guys want him down here, let me know for next meeting.
I don't think we do, it's, I think we just need to come up with a number on infrastructure of what we feel comfortable with, even before the bids.
Well, we'll just see towards the end of this month, if we want him here, we can still add him.
Alright, yeah, if you got, like I said, he would have been here tonight, I just didn't think it was really.
I mean, I think everybody's seen what they wanna say and, and understand what they, that they're, you know, we just need to get it going.
Okay, good enough, thanks guys. Um, also, he called me about a water grant approval that we've been on the top of the list for a couple of years now. Um, it's a forty percent grant on anything with water. Um, anything out there as far as the tank or the pumps or anything like that, that you guys can think of.
And what would that grant cover, do you know?
Not my meters.
Does it cover like cleaning the.
Did you check in that?
Tower and.
I thought you talked to him, he says it's not the meters.
No, no, that was for the pumps out here that we already purchased, it can't be for anything sewer, just for water, yeah.
Okay, so we should need to check on the meters, because I do, I do have to go into some places to read.
Who's very associated with meters, you'd be covered.
Who's that through then?
The grant?
Yeah.
I'd have to call him and ask, I didn't write that down.
Who mentioned it?
Uh, that Tom Clumundy, I wonder if he did.
Oh, you know, that blue tank was supposed to get cleaned, that hasn't been cleaned and.
That's gonna be coming up here.
I told him we'd get a list together for him and.
Oh, it is scheduled.
Well, I don't know if it's scheduled yet or not, but I know he has to do in the tower. Like, I said that, he looked at the paperwork and he said that the blue tank will be scheduled to, for cleaning pretty soon.
About five or six years ago that it got cleaned.
Yeah, and then they checked the rivets.
Yeah.
To make sure the rivets are all, I don't know what happened to them totally, but.
I can call, like, I didn't find out when to, if that's coming up next year or.
Okay.
I know it's a pretty good expense, them come in and clean like that, cause they gotta clean and then sanitize, you know?
How about any pumps or anything out there that you guys saw?
Both pumps are good.
He said anything with the water towers included?
Would the tank cleaning be a part of it?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if it's part of it, then, you know, that'd be something that we could maybe work with. Then or something that the, what did the paperwork do? He did say something about the water town, tower getting re-lined again.
Is that, I mean, check into this bill and let me know, we have to have it in by December thirty-first, I'll go check on that again. But he also said, okay, so forty percent would be granted, that we could piggyback that with our street project also. But if we're doing, you know, an infrastructure, maybe it's something we have to put another five or ten bucks, I don't know. You know, that'd be something we have to see, but it's gonna be a hell of a lot better to come up with a hundred percent of it.
Right.
Three months from now, so.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay? Yeah, just, if you can, think of anything built and then just let me know, I can sure tal, call him and see what falls under and whatnot, so, okay? Any other questions on that, guys?
I don't know.
Good. Or if you guys think of something, just let me know, I can get a whole, like I said, end of December, I believe.
Okay.
Alright, um, letter to the city, was that the one from John Miller?
Yeah.
Wanted me to read?
Yeah.
Okay, um, this is from John Miller to the City of Gafflin employees, Bill Munson and Tom Franchino. Uh, big thank you, public servants seldom hear from constituents unless it's a complaint. Here's a big thank you for gathering the benches and storing the flower pots in front of the False Hope Gym the other day. I normally remove the pots, this year you guys did it for me, thank you. I'm sure the benches are in a better place than setting outdoors. If you ever need a place to store the benches, all the benches, they can be stored in the storage area behind the False Hope. Thanks for doing so much to keep our little town looking good. I was also very impressed when the garbage cans were actually replaced near the garage. At Jason's a few weeks ago on a breezy day, best always, John Miller. There you guys go. I'm waiting on my letter for us to get. I'm not gonna hold my breath, so thank you, guys. Um, I don't know if you guys want that. Um, anything else? Approve the bills, that's it for new business, right?
Yeah.
Okay? Everyone got bills?
I didn't see, I think I was more on the right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jeff, I, motion, Lauren second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who's, motion passed. Alright, and that's it, that's, no one else has anything, council? Good, alright, then just the date and time of next meeting, it is Monday the seventh, at seven, work?
Work for me.
Good?
Yeah.
Jeff, you feel me good?
I think so.
Do we, we don't need a motion for that one, do we?
No.
You don't? Alright, and with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.